Thank you all for coming. Mrs. Nash, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Mrs. Neary.
She's here. I think she stepped away from him. She's here, though.
Mrs. Boatright.
Here.
Mrs. Bowlin.
Here.
Dr. Flowers.
Present.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
And Mrs. Sylvia.
Thank you. We will now have a pledge allegiance. If we could all stand and Mrs. Bowlin will lead us in the pledge allegiance, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have a moment of silence. Please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Rose Marie Noons, retired teacher, Underwood Elementary School. David Pascal, cousin of Colleen Pascal, special education teacher at Pell. Dorothy McGarry, aunt of Patricia Thomas, ELL teacher at TMS. Bobby Dobson, uncle of Jala Leonard, math teacher at RHS. Dennis Klizem, uncle of Kathryn Carrillo, grade one teacher at Pell. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Josephine's not here for the... Do we know if... Okay, so we'll go over... If Josephine comes in, we'll certainly go back and get the student council. There's nobody replacing Josephine tonight, right, for the student council that we know of? Okay. So we'll move on. The next is resolution and certificates of achievements. And first up tonight is the recognition of the NAC Tech Army Junior ROTC students. Mrs. Bowlin, I believe, has those. The following students won the Rhode Island State Championship, the All Services Division, and the Cyber Patriot 2018-2019 competition. So as I call your name, if you come up, Mrs. Bowlin will give you your certificate. You can all gather right here and get a nice picture at the end. So we'll start out with Cameron Brown. Oh, no, I gave it... Didn't I give her it? Well, do we have them right?
Yeah, we have them right.
So Cameron Brown? Okay. Lucian Sullivan. And Victor Monafusco. Becky, do you have another name? If you could... So let's give them one more big round of applause. Very good. Junior ROTC have been winning a lot of awards this year, so we're very proud of them.
Mr. Chair, just want to recognize Colonel Corbett and Colonel Young are also here from the Career in Tech program.
The next up on the recognition are the P-Tech students and Skills USA winners. So the first up, the following students recently participated in the Skills USA competition and placed in the following categories. The first category is cybersecurity for high school, and there was gold medal awarded to Benjamin Townsend and Michael Ng. So if you want to do the same thing, you can all... Benjamin? You can just gather up front and everybody can have a picture at the end of the... For commercial baking, high school division, gold medal went to Abigail Moser. Benjamin? Do me a favor, just go this way a little bit. I can't see the queue up there, so I don't know if anybody's coming. Thanks. For technical computing applications in the high school, gold medal to Stella Garcia. And cybersecurity in the high school division, a silver medal to Pierce Mott and Eli Winnecker. Technical computing applications in the high school category, a silver to Nathan Murphy. Restaurant service in the high school, bronze to John Lynn Baker. Technical computing applications in the high school, a bronze to Caroline Warner. Web design, we had several medal winners for that. Gold medal went to William Fury and Leslie Ortiz. Silver medal was awarded to Emma Dagnall and Christine Cecilia. And the bronze was Margaret Cohen and Alini Cooper. Let's give them another big hand around the shoulders for their achievements.
Mr. Chair, just want to recognize, I believe I saw Holly Blasberg out in the audience. I also want to recognize that Ms. Aud, Monica Aud, from Career in Tech chef is here as well. Am I missing anyone else from NAC Tech? And other Rogers High School teachers are here as well. That helps support all the students, so thank you.
The next category, the recognition of the National History Day winners. And congratulations to all the Rogers High School juniors who competed at the Rhode Island College on March 23rd for the National History Day. First and second place will represent Rhode Island at the national competition in June. So we have several winners from Rogers. First one is Kalen Martin, first place in historical paper category. Next, Stella Garcia for second place individual website category. Robert Zeller for second place in the individual exhibit category. And then we have a group of Avery Whitaker, Jennifer Ferreira, and Zalana Medina for second place group exhibit category. Next group is Gray Icock, an honor body coat for first place in a group documentary category. Next group, we have John Hermes, Kayla Fleming, Nicole Rodrick, and Nate Buchanan for second
A long time. Congratulations.
And then finally, we have Angelina Levitt for third place individual performance category.
And Mr. Chair, their coach, right there, Ms. Colleen Turner.
Thank you, and congratulations for representing your school so well.
Mr. Chair, can I just add that, so all these teams are going to nationals, and it's expensive. And they're all doing fundraising. And I know that we have one fundraiser coming up, May the 5th. That's a spaghetti dinner at Sardella's. And those tickets are $20, or you can just make a donation and see chef for those. Also, you can see me any time other than today, because I didn't bring them with me, but I'm selling them. And then also, History Day is just getting their things together, but you'll be hearing more about what their fundraiser is. And also, last week, you had a very successful spaghetti dinner over at Fenner Hall, is that correct? But they're still looking for donations. Anybody interested, just see one of the coaches. Thank you.
And the Drama Club had one for the sound system.
And the Drama had one also over at Hibernian Hall. And they're trying to raise funds for the next play and for...
For sound system.
And the sound system. All right?
Next thing on the agenda is presentation this evening. We have a presentation from Sail Newport. We have Kim Habgood with us, Sail Newport Program Director, and she'll present the fourth grade Pell Sailing and Science Program and a video of our students at Sail Newport and all the work they're doing there with our partners at Sail Newport. So, Kim?
Good evening, thank you. And I think if we can start, this is a short, one-minute video that was done to capture a little bit about what the program that we have is all about. Enthusiastic fourth graders. On behalf of Sail Newport's staff and board, we wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come and give you a brief presentation about this really special, unique presentation. I think Newport as a city is really very fortunate, and I didn't grab from telling you that, but you can drive it. Newport is incredibly fortunate that we have some amazing associations between schools and entities like nonprofits like Sail Newport.
Kim, I'm sorry to interrupt. You're going to have to, for the television audience, you're going to have to speak into the microphone. You can pull it off if you're more comfortable doing that.
Yeah, that's fine. But Sail Newport is very fortunate to be able to partner with the school district and offer a really unique opportunity for students to engage in both an academic as well as a sport and a skill development that many will probably never, outside of this, have an opportunity to. And the program has been around for two years. And why it's so unique is, I think, getting kids out of the four walls of the classroom and providing them the opportunity to experience what the science that they're studying in the classroom, but in a new environment. The classroom that is Fort Adams State Park and the harbor is really a special place, and the impacts that are gained for the teachers by being able to really engage their students in a hands-on way is felt very differently when you get outside and feel the salt in the air, smell it, touch it in the water when you're studying salinity, or by looking at the rock formations at Fort Adams, or studying some of the marine life that inhabits, you know, under the water. But why sailing? Why is that such an important piece? I don't know how many sailors there are in the room. There are a few, Taylor and Colleen and Louisa. But if you're a sailor, you have a really deep appreciation for the impact. It is a sport, but it is a very unique sport, because unlike a lot that we typically physically outgrow as we get older, or there are fewer opportunities to engage, sailing is something you can do, any age can participate in. And really importantly, I think, it provides the kids, and we've seen this day in and day out with the fourth graders, the opportunities for personal growth, some independence, confidence building, and real empowerment, I think. We would welcome anyone who wants to come down any weekday when we're running the program in the fall or spring. And you can just see how the fourth graders are engaged in a way that is really meaningful. They are doing it, and they're realizing that they are capable of doing it. And so I think it lends strength and impression to all of the experiences they're going to have in their lives, in terms of that ability and recognition that they can accomplish it. It also gives them a unique perspective of the city. I think being on the water and seeing Newport from that perspective gives you a very different view of what this community is and everybody's place in it. So I think that's really important. Couple little facts about the program. We started it, and thank you, Colleen and Donna Kelly, who's now a second grade teacher here, who's on our board and really helped galvanize interest, helped get the teachers behind it. And we're really, truly thankful to the teachers. We recognize they don't have to leave school to come to Sail Newport to run this program, you know, the academic side of the program. They could be doing it in the classroom, but I think they've benefited and seen what it means for the kids in terms of a different type of learning environment, and they value that now. They come eight weeks in the fall, eight weeks in the spring. Each class, this year, they're eight, about 160 fourth graders, so they're each coming once a week for eight weeks, a total of 16 weeks. We totaled up the sailing hours, and it was, for the first year in 2017-2018, it was about 3,200 hours of sailing between all of the kids participating. And we've, in two years, had only one child elect not to participate, it was actually the parent, to participate. Everyone else, which is, I think, we feel we're so happy that there is that kind of interest and willingness to give this a try and to trust their kids to this opportunity. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the school committee has. We do one thing, and I didn't put it on the slide, but I probably should have... So the school provides the teachers and the students, Sail Newport provides everything else. We pay the entire cost of the program, including the busing. So there's no cost to the school district for this. And I would encourage the school committee to continue to take advantage of other opportunities like ours that come along for the benefit of the kids. Louisa?
I just, being a sailor, have to mention that there's a whole lot of math and geometry in sailing, too. So I think you're undercutting the benefits that you offer, it's not just the science.
Right. And we, that's, it's a very good point. The teachers are the ones who select out of the required subjects that they have to teach, which are the topics they're going to teach at, when they come over to Sail Newport. And so whether the water, rock forms, we do the things that fit. But just, when they're on the sailboats, they're not just sailing, they're not just having fun, despite, you know, hopefully they had smiles on their face on the video. But they actually are. It's a great way, and the instructors, our sailing instructors, engage them in a lot of discussion about mechanic, mechanics, purchase, you know, mass, buoyancy. There are a lot of basic fundamental science features that are, sort of, do really well in the sailing environment. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, and also to point out that our second graders also get an incredible opportunity to explore swimming. And they go to that during, I don't know exactly how... PE class during, when they're second graders. So that's a great... Now, next year, you'll be getting the first class that is done...
Finished the swimming.
That's done both, that's been in the pool and sailed.
This is, it's a great program. My son loved it. He can't wait to get back on the water for the second half, so it's great. So you get students excited about the water and about sailing. What's next?
What's next? Good question. So we're hopeful that a lot of the kids, whether they participated in the program or there's any grade in, at school, whether it's Pell, Rogers, Thompson, would come and join us during the summer. We offer youth programs for nine weeks over the course of the summer for all ages and skill levels. The interesting thing, this was the first year, so second year of our program, this is the first year when we did registrations for the summer program, and we still have space. I had, in two instances, parents specifically identify that they were enrolling their kids in our summer program because of the experience they'd had as part of their school year. So for us, that's very gratifying. We actually give Pell four to five spots a year to give out to whomever they so choose, the Pell teachers select. And I think we would encourage, you know, and hope that anyone from the community, and we offer substantial financial aid, and it's very reasonably priced when you compare it to other babysitting options or daycare.
Any other... I just want to end by saying thank you.
No.
It's a great opportunity. It certainly gives kids that live in Newport with sailing so much around them the opportunity that they wouldn't have otherwise, the exposure to it. And I think the relationship with the pulls of science is, as well, is a great opportunity. So thank you.
Come down anytime.
Can I ask you to go to the podium so everybody can hear?
That's Gretchen. I forgot to mention her. She's one of our NAC Tech superstar teachers assistants with chef.
So as a Rogers graduate and former coach at Sail Newport, I just want to let you know that we're introducing also culinary arts. Part of our program is going to be, I've had fellow colleagues of mine in the yachting industry that are going to introduce our students about how to cook on boats and that whole experience. So it's really, we're just trying to introduce how you can make a living through the yachting industry itself. So not only is it just such a lifetime amazing experience, it's really becoming quite a foundation, like through Sail Newport Iris and the culinary program, and just encouraging that kids. So that's a start, and now they can grow through it, through, all the way up to high
Yeah, I do, it was mentioned earlier that Donna Kelly, who's the teacher here from Pell, did really have a lot of the momentum behind this, developed the entire curriculum, took a sabbatical just so she could do that. So I do think she, too, should get a hand of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Next up on the agenda is public comment. Mrs. Nash, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do, all for agenda item topics.
So they'll hold until the agenda item?
At that time, yes.
Perfect. The next item up would be action items. Item 6.1 is request for approval of the Rogers High School Program of Studies. And I believe Mr. Vance is available, and Mr. Monahan to answer questions. So we have it before you. So the program of studies is before you. I know a couple of you have questions. Anybody? Becky?
Yeah, I do. So could you point out any major changes from last year to this year in that program of studies? Like, is there any major changes?
Nothing significant. We tried to clean up a little bit of the language, make it a little more of an easy read. We did go through and got feedback from all the department chairs and the departments to figure out if there are any courses that really haven't run in a while that would help us to streamline course requests, so that we didn't have a couple of requests for this course, a couple of requests for that course, and so on, and resulting in not having enough requests to run any of those courses. The biggest change that we made was through our summer work, through the bar grant with Sizer, where we, with the staff and students, created the Viking Vision on page four. Sorry, on page four of the program of studies. That replaced the old mission that was a little vanilla. We took this and we identified nine habits of work and learning that represent the things that we want to be doing every day during school. Things such as responsibility and what that means, the growth mindset, collaboration, critical thinking, engagement, kindness, curiosity, reflection, organization. So we spent a lot of time coming up with these organically in order to really represent what the people of Rogers, the students, the staff, and some family input to come up with all of these things. So that's the biggest thing. It's more our own than some type of a mission statement that doesn't really tell you what's going on in our school.
A couple more. The AOP classes, in the past, I know there's been a problem with not being able to offer every one of them each year. Do you anticipate, like, we've had to...
Are you talking AP or ALC?
I'm sorry, AP classes. AP, sorry. AP classes, and I know that at one time we were going to have them put on kind of a rotating schedule. Do you anticipate any classes not being offered next year for AP at this point?
Yeah, this year, we had not enough to, not enough requests of each to do AP Biology and AP Chemistry. So Biology had a few more requests. We decided to run that, since there are competing requests for both. Some students who took Biology as juniors can opt for Chemistry as seniors. And that's a likely, a lot of schools, I believe, do that, where they'll do every other year.
I would think as long as we let the kids know ahead of time, so they know, you know, they don't have to miss out.
Yeah, we did, when I came on board in the summer, we still were trying to keep both of them alive. I mean, it's possible we could run them both. It really depends, you know, when you're getting down to six requests, five requests, it's just tough sometimes to justify if there are other bigger needs at the same time. You know, but we'll try to run them all.
Okay, my last question is, I know that last year, we, Mr. Vance, we talked about having, in order to do a different schedule, especially like an 80-minute schedule, that you were going to have to do a lot of teacher prep and PD to have... Has any of that taken place in terms for next year for that new schedule you plan to implement?
That's been going on ongoing since the summertime, that we are linking that in with the Sizer and the bar work, so that prep to teach in a larger block has been taking place throughout the course of the year.
I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to first go to that one that you just answered, Mrs. Bowlin. So when you say it's been prepped since last summer for the change of schedule, the teachers have been prepping since last summer?
So the work through Sizer and BAR around project-based learning and student-centered learning approaches is the work that's been happening since the beginning of the summertime through the school year. And it's those approaches which are going to fill that 80-minute block of time.
Right, I understand that. Are the teachers currently, all of the teachers, not one, two, three, are all of the teachers being trained right now...
Correct.
...on this change that is happening supposedly in the fall?
Correct. Yeah, they, yes, it's, Sizer, their consultants are in our building a few times a month, sometimes in the afternoon. Each department is participating in all of that training. You know, so science is doing it a little different than English, and a little different than math or than art, but everybody in the building is participating in it.
Okay. So last... Okay. So last, a month ago, when we were here, I think it was a month ago, I can't remember, we talked about common planning time-
Yep.
And that there wasn't really a, it's not quite fully developed yet for the high school. So how are they, I, I'm having a hard time understanding how the teachers are getting this prep time or this preparation for this new schedule if they don't have a common planning time. That's just kind of a logistical, I'm not getting it.
Right. So we bring in the consultants and then we get subs for staff to be able to be out and receive that training throughout the course of the day. And then in the afternoons, we take up some of our faculty meeting time or the hour and a half PD time that we have during, every month to have that training happen. And then on the early release days, that's another hour and a half time that departments get to work with Sizer. So it's pretty, it's pretty regular.
So you're confident that smooth sailing in September?
Yes.
Okay. So this was actually about this. A couple of questions here. So there are college prep courses of study and honors course of studies. So for the audience, I'm going to ask questions that I know sound silly, but I don't come from this high school system. I come from a French high school system, so I don't, there's a lot of stuff I just don't get. So that's where my questions are coming from. So there's a college prep course of studies and an honors course of studies. Do the students, is it the same curriculum? Are they using different books? Do they have more time between honors? I just, I don't, I just don't understand. How does that work? And, and who gets into what?
Students of choice. Students of choice. I'll start by qualifying myself as not fully familiar with this school system and everything that's happening. But typically, the curriculum is very similar in an honors level and a college prep level. The depth of knowledge is more at the honors level where they demand, the teachers are going to demand more of the student. They're going to expect more well-developed essay, for example. They might have them use two literary works instead of just writing about one, things like that. As you get to the more advanced levels, the AP takes, takes over and that might differ from the college prep version of that course because there's a specific set of requirements as you work toward an AP exam. So that may vary, whereas in the college prep level, they're not bound to that.
But, I'm confused. But aren't they go, doesn't college prep mean they're going to college? Is that what-
Yeah.
College preparatory. So, and honors is the same but more?
It's, it's, it's more challenging. It's more challenging. Though, you can take the college prep pathway all the way up through senior year and be qualified to, to apply to and be accepted to colleges.
Okay.
Some highly competitive schools may want to see, they're, they're going to look at what we offer and they're going to compare that to a student's transcript and they're going to see how close to the most rigorous coursework did this student take during his high school time. And they're going to expect that you took more of the honors and the advanced placement courses in order to be prepared.
And so that's when the wait, the waiting comes in?
That's where the waiting for the GPAs and the class rankings come into play-
Come into play.
Where you rank among your other peers toward being the most prepared, so to speak.
But there isn't, the students in honors, let's say, are not doing more minutes of English or more minutes of Biology or more, it's the same amount of time, the content is, they're going to be asked to do more in that same amount of time?
Yeah, with the exception of possibly some, some science lab work that's extra, it's the same amount of time. They may have to do more on their own in order to, you know, meet the challenges, to meet the standards that are being put upon them.
Okay. So every student gets an elective, it looks like, if I understand. Oh, it says electives, whether it's honors or, well, actually, so we've got college prep, honors, is there anything else? What if you're not any one of those kind of students? What? So that's what CTE is for? I'm just trying to figure out, if you're not, if you don't want to go to college, I just don't understand.
Everybody's college prep.
So when every student comes into Rogers, we want to, we want to keep their doors open to college-
Right.
You know, across the board, right? And so college prep is that basic foundational class that goes all the way through and will prepare kids for college. There is nothing below that.
Okay. So everybody takes those, can take those courses?
Everybody can take those. Everybody can take honors. Everybody can take AP. You know, that's really a family and a student decision.
Okay.
You know, they may receive some guidance on that if they're not necessarily prepared based on their history academically, but all of those courses are open to every student. And so the last thing we want to do is have classes that do not prepare kids for college or do not meet the requirements for college, right? So anything lower than that college prep would put a student at a disadvantage being reviewed by colleges. So that is our, those are our foundational courses and then it's honors and advanced placement.
Okay. And then everybody takes electives?
Correct.
Right, okay. And they can choose from any of the offerings, it looks like any of the offerings, all of them?
Correct.
Just based on the schedule?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
I do have two more questions.
Are you done?
Oh, no, are you done?
Well, there's more, but go. There's more.
Okay, the freshman academy, is that something that's going to happen next year?
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the, we're working with prepping the team. We have some visits that are coming up very shortly. We have individuals from CSSR coming out on Thursday.
CSSR.
Council for Secondary School Reform. And so they're going to work with people that are interested on, to be on those academies, those teams, to do some prep work around team building and functioning as a high-performing team.
Okay. And then I noticed that the history now is in here, which is really exciting. The path, history path, you know, leadership, international leadership pathways in here, which is great. But did we end up, and I haven't found it, did the, put the visual arts pathway, is that in here?
Yes.
Is, okay, I missed it somehow. I don't know how.
The end of the career tech.
It's under the career tech, okay.
Please.
All right.
That's it, I'm sorry.
You're fine, because I'm going to go on the freshman academy thing. So that's for ninth grade, that's for all of the entering ninth graders?
Correct.
Correct. So how, how will the ninth graders be, hang on, I'm trying to figure out how to ask that question. I'm coming from Thompson and I'm an eighth grader, right? And I'm going to come to Rogers in the fall and I'm going to be a ninth grader. How do I know what to take? Like, do my teachers from eighth grade talk to my, my potential teachers from ninth grade? And do they, do we, do you figure out with parents, like, okay, what's the, like, the teachers who are, who've had the student for like four years, do they, do they get together and figure out the, I'm just trying to figure out how that works. And after that, I know the teachers know each other and blah, blah, blah. But, well, it's like fourth to fifth. I know that they talk. So is that what happens? Do all of the eighth, so if all of my teachers go meet with all of the ninth grade teachers and they identify my strengths and my weaknesses and then they go, you'll be really good in this?
So, so what you're talking about specifically right now has not happened, but that is something that is planned for the, for the freshman academy. The, we have teachers that are interested and we have tentative teams that we're looking at for staff. Once those are secure, then we would start, we would have those meetings with those ninth grade teachers that have conversations with the eighth grade staff about what are the qualities that these kids come to Rogers with. Not necessarily courses, not necessarily levels, any of those things, but just those skills. What we've done right now is really around course requests. So students are asking about what classes they're going to be able to take next year, but those individual conversations about students, those will happen later in the school year once we have those, the, the four core content on each team securely nailed down.
We also, we did have the, the eighth grade math teachers came and met with our, our math department chair. And we began some discussions a little while back because math is one place where there are some choices to make and they're important. We want every student to be in the right place come next year. So we discussed that. We discussed how we really welcome their recommendations of the students based on how they're doing as a, as a guide for them to help them make good choices. At the end of the day, we'll let, we'll let families make their decisions, but we want to-
Informed decisions.
We want them to be informed, exactly. So we've done that. The, the ninth grade guidance counselor went down for two days last week actually and met with all the students and their teachers and helped them to start working on the course selection process. So there's some work there where they discuss, you know, what this book is essentially, what's in it, what some of the things they need to be looking for, what the options are. And they also did come and they explored all the career tech opportunities for them as freshmen next year.
So for a student then, that's, so I'm an eighth grade student. I've seen the ninth grade counselor, they've come into Thompson, so I've seen them. At some point, the, my teachers in eighth grade will be talking to my potential teachers in ninth grade.
Correct.
And then, and then from there with the parents, I will make a decision and I will figure out myself.
Yeah. We do, we want to develop that program more. I don't know that that's historically been going on with the eighth to ninth grade teacher, ongoing conversations. I mean, we'd love to have eighth grade teachers come up and watch some classes and vice versa, I think, to know, you know, vertically how things are working and to make sure where, where starting, where they leave off and so on.
Right, yeah.
Another thing we did back in January, we had all the eighth graders come up and, and we had a series of, we had some presentations and a series of stations where they got exposed to a lot of our elective offerings and met some of the kids and saw some demonstrations and things like that, which is another new initiative that we tried this year. They, they seemed to have a good time.
Okay. Principal Vance, you said something about volunteers for the teams. So are not all teachers go, I, again, that's another place where my brain is a little stuck. Is it 100 and something, 167 eighth graders are going to come? So are you going to split them in, what's the freshman academy again? Could you refresh me? Sorry. It's been a long day already.
There'll be, there'll be two teams. And they'll be even, they'll be even number. So if it's 150, we're looking at 75 kids per team.
Okay.
And then when I said volunteers, we, because we're doing something different, we want people that are interested-
I see.
-to be a part of the team versus telling something they, somebody that they have to be. So we want them to be intrinsically motivated to be a part of the team and, you know, function together and collaborate and talk about kids. And so that's why we're, we're bringing in like CSSR. In the summertime, we're looking to partner up with the Boys and Girls Club and the Community School to do some team building things with the students and staff. So there's, there's a lot of work around the team building that is still, hasn't happened yet, but once we have those, those four core content teachers on either team are going to come in.
Just one, one thing about the whole team concept. We traditionally have the same teachers who teach the ninth graders. It's really an organizational model where we, we create a system so that the communication's much better. So these team members, these team teachers, they will have the same period off once a day where we could have an IEP meeting and have all the teachers' input or a 504 meeting or just a, a parent meeting of some sort, where the teachers can discuss how the kids are doing. And if Johnny's doing really well in my class but not so well in his, we might have that discussion to see what I'm doing that's working for him and that he might be missing. You know, it just, it creates a lot more opportunity that way when they're already going to be teaching those kids.
Yeah, fairly similar, I would say. That is fairly similar to the French system where our teachers were all powwow together.
Like in a cohort, yeah.
Yeah.
But I would have a huge concern that, like, basically, that's going to cause the need for more teachers. Because if you take, what is it in our eighth grade classes? Is it 133 right now or 160? I don't, I'm not sure. But once, so in other words, if, if you break that into two and that's all those teachers do, right?
They'll, they'll teach off-team. So they'll have three or four sections each.
And they're going to teach off-team?
And then they can teach an AP course or-
All right.
That's the wrestling matches that some-
You're not, yeah, so you're not anticipating any addition of teachers, correct? And so in a true model like this, they would stick to just the ninth grade, I think. You know, like a true-
Yeah, it depends on the size of the school. I mean, if it's, if it's a smaller school, then you don't do that. If it's a larger school, then yeah, you might have, like in the middle school, typically the teacher teaches only eighth grade.
Okay. And, and will these students be able to take any honors class in, in ninth grade? That, that will be built into the academy?
Yes.
And I had one other question about ALP students. Do ALP, this time ALP, do ALP students, do they take all their classes within the ALP department or do they go out for some math or some English? Could you expound on that?
So there's, there's a range of uses of the Alternative Learning Program. Some students are there for almost all their courses. They do take electives and PhysEd and things like that. But typically, all their core, English, math, or study, science are down in the ALP. Some students who are struggling may have some hybrid model where they take a course or two courses down in the ALP where they were having a difficult time for whatever reason. Some students emerge and start to take some courses outside. I've had kids halfway through the year move out of an ALP course and into a more traditional course. And there's been some success with that. It's, you know, it's a change because the classes tend to be bigger. You know, and, but I, I don't like to see a student who goes into a program and then there's no way to make any other choices. You know, if it's working for them, great. If they want to try something else, I'd like an avenue for them to be able to do that. So that's, that's how we've been using it. And it's really case by case.
Just back to the Program of Studies, not all of that. For each of the subjects, science, language arts, history, social studies, there's a list of courses. And are those offered, I think you addressed it and I think I missed it, are those offered, sorry, in the course of somebody's career at Rogers, will they have an opportunity to get at least one of them? Because I'm worried that there's so, there's a lot of them listed, but they're not off, I assume they're not all offered every year? Or are they all offered every year? When I see Algebra I college prep, Geometry college prep, Math Lab, Geometry honors, Algebra II, Algebra II pre-cal, I mean, are they all offered every year?
Typically with the math courses, they are all offered every year.
I mean, I just picked math because that's the first place I opened.
Some, some of the like social studies courses, they're semester-based. So students have an opportunity to actually take two different courses just over the course of a year. So the first semester, quarter one, quarter two, somebody might be in History of Sports. And then the second semester, quarter three and four, they're in another history elective. So they're, they're being able to double those up. So it may look like there are more courses offered, but it's also the timeframe. So our typical classes like a world, history or US history, those are a year long. Or Algebra I is a year long, while some of those other courses are just by the semester.
Okay. English Language Development. Well, actually, I am going to go back to the ninth graders, but it's good for the 10th, 11th, 12th. How do you do this Program of Study that you're showing with your students who, who are non, non-English speakers or English language learners? How, how do you work that? Is that, yeah, how do you do that?
We went into, we went into their English Language Development classes and worked with the teacher to, to help them understand what they're offering, what their opportunities are. Just like we, we did for the other students, I believe the counselors went into their history classes. But for that population, we needed a little bit more support to make sure they understood everything that we were trying to explain, like graduation requirements, things like that, credits and exactly what they need to do and where they are. So we used that, that course, those classes to help the students.
So you're using presumably that teacher to help inform what the, allow me, what the curriculum will be for that student? The ELD teacher?
They're helping them to understand. I mean, we, we try not to just translate to them so that they're doing everything in another language, but to help them understand some of the key things. It's, it's in the same, it's a language lesson while they're, you know, understanding the, the context of this Program of Studies and how high school education works in America.
Do you involve the parents? Especially those parents? Are they involved at all?
Well, the process requires-
Well, I don't mean for, I don't mean for ninth grade academy coming up next year. I, I mean in general. So-
In general, they're, they fill out a form that needs to go home and be signed by their, by their parent.
Right.
As part of the process.
But if the parent doesn't understand English, how does the parent give advice to their, so the parent hasn't been- So the parent hasn't been educated in the system. Certainly we've done our due diligence, but how does the parent help the child make a decision when the parent doesn't understand the system? Like me right now? And doesn't understand the language, which is not me at the moment.
It's something we could work on.
Do we, right, do we have translators?
We have translators.
Yeah.
Right, so you, you're making a, a great point. The issue for us is going to be able to identify those parents. We know who the kids are that are, don't necessarily have the English language and we're working with them in the building so they have a clear understanding. And it's the hopes that when they're able to go home and explain it to the parents, they can translate that understanding to mom and dad, but we don't have that guarantee. So it is definitely something that we need to work on, figuring out how to make sure that that information is translated home. You know, we do have translators, we have Anna, and then we have a handful of people in the building that speak another language that can help. We just need to be able to identify those families that need that support.
Mrs. Neary, I think you bring up an excellent point that perhaps even at the eighth grade, before they arrive at the high school and while our students are at the high school, we should work on probably some kind of plan, at least get a robo call out and maybe set up something for just English, Spanish speaking, our Spanish speaking population. And perhaps get a brief, something translated.
Something.
For them as well.
Right. Because as I read all this, I was wondering if it was translated into any other language? This 70 pages.
We've never done that, but this may be the first year we should start doing it. Good point.
Because I mean, some of, some of our parents may not be educated in the, in the English system. It doesn't mean they're uneducated. They could very well be able to read, they will read in Spanish or they're reading French or they're reading German, so if we had it, that would be, that would be great. I just wanted to make sure that our goal is to graduate everybody, so let's try, let's graduate, let's get them all in and graduate everyone. And I, my last questions, I know I said I was going to ask a lot of questions. It's the elective system. Again, we don't have that. The system I come from, we start at eight, eight in the morning and we end at five in the afternoon. That's high school. Every day there's no extra sports, there's no extra anything. So ninth grade, the student takes English, let's say, English Biology, His, World History, Geometry and an elective. So are those electives the same way, Mr. Vance, you said some regular courses are, some are semester, some are year long? Is, does that work the same way?
It does. Some are semester, some are year long, definitely.
And how many do they need in order to have fulfilled a full four year, but I know it says 20 credits, but so just basically, how many, or is there a limit on the number of electives that they can take?
So as, as long as they're meeting all the requirements for the other courses, there really isn't a limit. So they need the four years of math, four years of English, three science labs, social studies, things along those lines. But then those electives, there really is not a cap outside of what the space in their schedule is.
Okay. I, I think I have everything. May I have more questions?
Mr. Holmes, Mr. Leary.
I have four questions, most are pretty easy, but I want to start with Mrs. Bowlen's follow up. I want to start with Mrs. Bowlen's follow up first. You never answered a question she asked you. Are you hiring more teachers for the ninth grade academy? Yes or no?
No.
No, thank you. Question one. Question two is schedule. Schedule is very important and we had a lot of problems this year with the science schedule. It's pretty easy to do and I know you've got computers. So tell me that when you do the schedule, if the class size is 25, 26, you're not going to put 28, 29 kids in it. You can block it off at 25 and then figure it out. Is that the plan or you're planning to put 28 kids in and we go through this again?
Nope, that is the plan. There is a, there is a 10 day window at the beginning of the school year where we try and rectify those scheduling issues. By the end of those 10 days, we won't have kids over the 25.
Okay, it's easy to do. We did it with our computers, I taught school 40 years ago, so it's not hard to do. So two more questions, easy ones. The AP results, when are they, when's the test taking the AP?
AP happens the first two weeks, first two, four weeks of May and in July are when the results come.
So I expect you to come back here and give us a report that I've seen that we pay for it. We paid $20,000 for the testing for all the people, so I want you to come back and give us a report.
Sure.
And the last question, have the teachers bought into this yet?
What?
Bought into the ninth grade program and everything else in the 75 pages?
This has gone through the entire, the entire school, all the department chairs. They've gone through this, vetted it and it didn't change a whole lot, so it's been this way historically. So I would say yes.
Yes.
In terms of, in terms of the academy, I think there's, there's concern whenever you put a change forward, people are wondering what's going to do? What, what's it going to do for us? Why is this better? We've looked at neighboring communities where the failure rates have gone down, attendance rates have gone up. So we're starting there. It's really an organizational change that I think is going to benefit the kids. And every community where they've done the freshman teaming that I've been to and I've been to several, there's been the same apprehension and the result has been the same where people really bought in. Here and there, there's a teacher who it's not for them and they opt out and somebody else fills their place and it's always been, you know, I haven't seen that many, but I've seen several in Massachusetts and Rhode Island and it's, it's been higher quality and the teachers really like it.
Last question and this for Mrs. Jemaine. Didn't we have a ninth grade academy before?
I'm sorry, did we have?
Didn't we have a ninth grade academy before?
Not since I've been here.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Flowers.
I'm coming back back in. Working my way back.
While all this discussion was going on, I had already gone through the presentation and looking through it more and more. And just as a little bit of a sidebar, 11 years ago, when I first decided to run, I thought, I envisioned, you know, like magnet schools on the island, you know, you get all these great ideas that each school would have, each high school would have a concentration. And I'm looking at all that's being offered here and all of the, I'd say general themes, sort of like the, the fine and lively arts, math and science and so forth, and all of the curriculum at Career and Tech are really offered here at Rogers, at Rogers High School. And looking at this, and it's also, it's on the public part of board docs that people can, they may already have reviewed it. This is put into place, I don't know how any student could really honestly say, I'm bored. There's, it's just some really wonderful things that are going on presently and I can see going on in the future at Rogers. The idea of having the parents become familiar with what is offered to their youngsters is, is very, very important and especially for those who might not have the facility with the English language. I'm, I'm sure that their translators are offered. Matter of fact, I was in the guidance office yesterday, meeting with my mentee who's graduating this year. I keep, I'm so proud to say that. But there was someone there working with, sitting down with a mom of one of the students. She had her little one with her and I mean, I understood they were speaking Spanish. I don't understand it, but they, the, there was a person there helping this mom with, with the, dealing with something to do with her son in the guidance office. I think this is a perfect opportunity to let the public know when even those who are going to be watching this, of the tremendous resources that are provided to our young people. And just the, looking at the leadership opportunities that the, the, the young people have. I'm glad to see the visual arts is going to be coming in too. A greater sense of it in the Career and Tech program. But finally, I think what's very important is to look at that, this three-pronged approach to all of this. I think showing these, the Viking vision, these habits, good habits of working and learning is something perhaps all of us could take for some of our own philosophy. And also you really have three factors in putting all of this, all of this presentation into practice. You have them right here. You have the teachers, all the people, the faculty, all of the professionals working on this. And you have the parents and guardians and you have the kids themselves. So each, to keep that standing, each of the three has to be in place at all times. I'm, my experience is elementary education where you're trying to keep all the balls in the air at the same time. And I can sympathize and empathize with anyone who's putting schedules together and curriculum together. It's a tremendous amount of work here and not solely the administrators, but the teachers too, those people in the trenches, that this is not an easy job and I think every one of us has to understand that. So thank you for the presentation and thank you for providing this.
Okay, hopefully this is the last time. Question, can students take eight classes and opt out of the academic support? Will they be allowed next year to take eight classes?
Yeah, if, if, if it makes sense, if it works in their schedule, I'm sure.
And that we just would never have to hire any more teachers to do that, correct? Like we're not going to let it impact for next year?
If, if every single student took eight classes, it would probably demand more than we could do, but I mean, there's got to be a ceiling to that.
Yes.
You know, it's space provided is one of the, one of the things. But I mean, there are often classes where there are some extra seats, you know, year in and year out. So those seats are open for an eighth course.
Okay, just checking.
Students can also take a virtual high school course during that time. There's, there's other things and there, there are like possible lab supports that we're putting into place where students can get extra help for their current coursework, like in math and in literacy.
Mrs. Neary?
Just curiosity, ceramics? Do you have a kiln? Cool. Just really cool.
Any other questions?
There's one here. We have one here.
This one in this, what?
Yeah.
No, there isn't.
Yeah, there is. I think there is.
Okay, so any other discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none, then the request for approval of the program of studies is before you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve Mrs. Flowers, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Boatright, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
I want to thank Principal Vance, Mr. Monahan, teachers for all their input and for putting all this together. I knew it took, it took a while, so thank you very much. We appreciate it. And we will follow up on the Spanish interpretation and providing us a workshop.
At least.
Okay, thank you, great idea.
Translated.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a request for approval of the TMS elevator repair. This is self-explanatory. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Boatright, seconded by Mrs. Neary. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary.
It says it's due to power failure.
Just a minute, I can, Mr. Harab is here, we can.
Mr. Man can come up. So explain that, please.
Explain?
Explain that, it says to replace the driveboard and control board due to building power failure.
Yeah, so it could not be definitively tied to any surge in power, which is why it was not able to be put into the trust for insurance, but periodically when buildings lose power and it comes back up, the control panels that control the door operators fail. And when they fail, if you cannot tie it to insurance, then in order to repair the elevator, you have to replace that panel in order for the door operator to function correctly. So efforts were made to put it into the trust, but it was just not something that could be supported.
Do you have evidence of that? Do you have evidence from the trust saying that they denied it?
I will get you something in writing from the trust if that's what you require. The problem with waiting on that, and I certainly will ask them, is right now with the freight elevator, when it's not functional, you're having orders delivered that the custodians have to break all of the pallets down, carry the materials through the building to another elevator. You've already got a short staff custodian wise that can't keep up with the cleaning. So you're basically tripling at a minimum the labor hours to move materials to the upper floors, which will take them away from cleaning and also increases, although it may not happen, the potential that one of them could injure themselves. So I certainly can get you something from the trust in writing, but it's really an urgently needed piece of equipment that's in the school that really needs to be maintained in operating order.
How long's it been out for?
It's been out for approximately one month.
And you haven't contacted trust yet for?
The trust has been contacted numerous times immediately. They were waiting on information from Kone and from the staff at Thompson Middle School itself, after which they said that it could not be tied to a power surge, which is why it could not be covered.
Thank you.
Dr. Flowers?
Just a sidebar, first of all, I would, I would certainly hope that this gets done because we don't want to be going back to the days of letting things fall apart, shall we say, and not fixing it. But right at that particular time, if it makes anyone feel any better, the sound system of St. Joseph's Church next door was blown out because of the power surge. So it must have been something that happened in that neighborhood and just, and they had to have some work done on it because it's necessary, so it does happen. But again, I, I think, I'm looking at this, it's a tidy sum, but we don't want to get back of the days of not fixing what should be fixed.
Mrs. Neary?
I would say just for due diligence, I mean, I'm going to approve this, for due diligence, have the letter so you can, we can have it on file for the future. That's it.
Any other questions?
Ms. Chairman, just to think would be clear.
Mr. Leary.
This $12,000 is coming out of the city part of the budget, of our part of the budget?
This will be coming out of the school's repair and maintenance budget, which is below the level of capital improvement, so it would not be funded by the city. And fortunately, I say fortunately, if you're spending money that's never fortunate, but I remind, the school committee knows this better than me, that the school's department must spend a minimum percentage of their operating budget on repair and maintenance and there are penalties if you don't. So when I presented to my boss and to the city manager and the director of finance all of the numbers, I included 100% of the repair and maintenance budget that the schools had, plus the $160,000 approximately that CIP that paid for the new water line into Rogers, and it was still short. It was still below the level that is supposed to be met this year. Now that is being covered by work that myself and the plumber do because you can count part of our salaries towards that requirement. But every, for every dollar you take away would be another dollar that needs to be made up. So I would just say that it's almost like it's a restricted account, like I had on the federal side when I was in the military. It's, it's there for a purpose and that's the purpose that it really needs to be used for. So when you have something that's broken, I'll, you know, mirror what Dr. Flowers was saying, rather than get to the point where we have buildings that are going into disrepair, let's make those smart repairs and take care of what we need to. Thank you. Any other questions?
Seeing no other questions, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next item up is 6.3, request for approval of policy number 4612 on the first reading. And I'll ask Dr. Flowers from the policy committee to discuss that.
The policy committee has been very busy going over a number of areas. This is a first reading, 4612 is the interview process and procedures for selection of principals and above. We had brought this before the committee previously, but so much work needed to be done on it. We're doing another first reading. And it's the interview committee composition. People who have the copies of it, you'll see in red, excuse me, what has been added. And simply starts out that an interview committee composed of a teacher been added. And simply starts out that an interview committee composed of a teacher, a principal, a community partner, and at least one parent or guardian. And then it continues with the central office administrator and so forth. A student is also included in this for the, the initial interview committee. We inserted the line that the human resources director shall solicit names of parents and community members as potentially serving on interview committees, and shall maintain a list of those names. So there'll always be a bank of names of people who are really interested in that whole process. And this is for the application for the position of principal or above. This is separate from other kinds of interview committees. The rest of the policy remains the same. And we're asking for the passage of this on its first reading, and if so, the second reading will be at the May meeting.
So, based on Dr. Flowers, I'd ask for a motion to approve and a second, and then we can discuss the motion. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Neary, is there a second? Mrs. Boatright, any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Bowlen.
Yeah, I just want to point out that there's one thing in the policy on this one for principals and above, and it says, "Any and all qualified Newport, public school, I'm sorry, public schools employees and Newport residents shall be granted an interview upon submission of a completed application for the position of principal or above." So, when we formed, when we did this originally a few years ago and added the Newport, all Newport people who are qualified get an interview, we meant this for not just principals and above. We meant this for custodians, we meant it for teachers, we meant it for everything. And so, I know this, this particular policy doesn't cover it, but I bring it up now because you want to read it here, and you're going to see in the next policy, I want to see it added, the Newport thing. So, I just, I pointed out now that we need to take that language and insert it in the other policy.
Yeah, and again, this is the process and procedures. The, this particular 4612 is the, is solely about the composition of the committee. That's it.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next policy, next item, 6.4, request for approval of policy 4650 on the first reading. Again, I'll ask Dr. Flowers to explain the action item.
Thank you. This is appointments and promotions. And we crossed out some sentences that were redundant, and inserted an ad hoc initial interview committee appointed by the director of human resources. A minimum of a central office administrator and one or more community members reflecting the ethnic diversity of the district, and others as appropriate to the position being considered, shall review all applications and make recommendations to the superintendent. So what we're doing is sort of broadening the characteristics of the interview committee. And like when it says, "Others as appropriate to the position," so it might be some area of like elementary or secondary or a particular discipline or any of the other places where there are specific criteria. And then, there's a rewrite of another paragraph that now will say, excuse me, "The superintendent of schools shall fulfill his or her role as defined in state law regulation 16-2-1197 by recommending the candidate that the superintendent deems most qualified for the position for appointment by the school committee." So you have your interview committee recommends candidates, the superintendent with his or her role as defined by the state law recommends that candidate, and then it comes to us. And then, one insert on how the, the written notice goes out to people about these openings, we inserted, "As well as appropriate online posting." You know, when these, when these policies were written back in the day, there was no such thing. So now we had to put in the, all the technology. And that is the only differences in this.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Flowers here, and Dr. Flowers' explanation of the policy change. Is there a motion to approve?
Well, I wanted to say, comment before we put it in or not, can we?
You have to have a motion in order to...
Have to make a change.
Motion by Mrs. Neary, seconded by Mrs. Boatright. Discussion on the motion to approve the policy is writ.
So, I'm to assume it says appointments and promotions. So we're talking about appointing teachers, we're talking about appointing anyone, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what, did you not?
I did not hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, it says here at the top, appointments and promotions. This is to include appointing the positions of a new teacher, a new parent, professional, that applies to everyone, is that correct?
It does apply to everyone, but I caution that usually when we do our postings, we do internal postings.
Right.
So I, if your goal is to ensure that Newport residents are interviewed, I suggest in the second paragraph, after the sentence that says, "The initial review of job qualifications and certification criteria shall be determined by the director of human resources," after that, insert, "Any and all qualified Newport residents shall be granted an interview when applicable." Sometimes if you have an internal posting, we're not going to bring people from...
Right, so I would say, so for new...
That's why I'm saying that.
For new postings, like new positions, could it say new positions? Or as long as it's not internal?
Correct. Like, that's what we would want to honor the contract.
Excluding internal, excluding internal. So I would like to make that, that amendment to that, to that policy, which...
A second.
You have to verbalize what the amendment would be.
Okay, so the amendment would be, and I'd have...
And where would you like it?
Let me go back to the last one. Did you just write it up?
I did.
Okay, go ahead and say it.
The amendment would be to add, in the second paragraph, after human resources period, the new sentence after that would follow, "Any and all qualified Newport residents shall be granted an interview when applicable."
Well, why not say when it's a, when it's a appointment?
When it's a new appointment, maybe. Like, in other words, well, because it could be an internal posting for a new appointment. So, it would have to be...
I'd just say when applicable, because I caution you on that, unless you want to take it back to the subcommittee and discuss further. That would be my recommendation at this point.
All right, we'll leave it when applicable. Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, so I'm going to, my recommendation is take it back to policy. You have a meeting coming up, further the discussion, to ensure you have the correct wording.
Right. What, may I assume that everyone read this before tonight? Yes, okay. You can submit it to us, and then we can, I just want to get the process correct. This can be sent out to the committee with that sentence for them to review before the second reading, correct?
That is correct.
Good. Do it that way.
Well, we have an amendment on the floor.
So we, we have an amendment on the floor for, to add the sentence, "After human resource in the second paragraph, any and all qualified Newport residents when applicable."
Shall be granted and...
Granted an interview when...
Shall be granted and then to be when applicable. So that's the motion, amendment to the policy. Any discuss, any other discussion that's been made, and seconded by Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any other discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Now, back to the original motion, it would be to approve the reading, approve the policy 4650 on the first reading with the amended language added to it. Is there a motion on that?
Yeah.
Yes, there was.
Mrs. Neary, seconded by Mrs. Boatright. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, 6.5, approval for fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. And I would ask Mrs. Boat, Ms. Boatright to discuss that.
Um, so the finance, the finance subcommittee met several times over the month of March to try to come up with a balanced budget, which is required. And we've looked at all the recommendations made by the teachers, then what was recommended by the administration. We made a few changes to that to try to get it to a balanced budget. The max we can really request from the city is 4%. And that is what our ask is going to be because we feel we need the max. There are several cost drivers, which I can go through. Would you like me to go through the detail here?
Yes, please.
So, some of the significant cost drivers are increased out-of-district placement, which are both special ed-driven as well as, as well as other from CTE programs and MET programs and charter school programs. And also the transportation that goes along with many of those out-of-district placements. There have been some increased needs this year that had been not predicted, which are adding of some special need resources within the building. So we have to count for those going into next year. There have been some workers' comp issues. So our workers' comp insurance went up into the hundreds of thousands, I think $126,000, which was unexpected. Liability insurance up a bit, severance up. As far as facilities, just as Tom Harrod was saying, we have been going with under the amount of custodial help. We really have to take care of our buildings. It's critical. And utilities, everybody here, most people here are from Newport. Water and sewer rates are going up again at significant numbers. We just got a notice from National Grid that they're raising their rates a significant amount. So, all of those things are, we have to pay these bills. There are, between the retirees and the benefits and salaries and increases, another one that we have to do is, we have all this beautiful new technology from the city, but things do break and they will have to be repaired. We have to start a technology basically fund for that. So we've had to put that in this year. We have to do debt service to pay back the city for the overage of last year. We have added a couple of new pathways. Electric Boat has been working with the Newport School Department for almost three years now, and we are implementing a new pipe fitting as well as an electrical program, which is part of the construction tech, construction technologies. Used to be just carpentry, but it's really construction technology. So you get more than just carpentry out of the, that particular offering. As far as culinary, it's being expanded to have more hospitality-oriented extensions, I'm going to call it. So those are all adds. Then we've, there's going to be a modification, as a savings, there's a modification to the cluster program at the middle school. And basically, we have a number of classes at the middle school level in the sixth, seventh, and eighth. Not the, the fifth is still at the old model of the elementary school model. But where there's, I'm going to just say some classes that it requires more art teachers and more specialty teachers and so on. And so in order to try to get to a situation where we can, it will reduce the number of classes, but, so we can accommodate all their needs, we will be adding a couple more support people in there for students who have high reading needs and so on. Another one is, there's going to be a reduction in some of the special ed paras that have been added recently. There are some special ed positions last year that were added recently that we've had to cut. And the third that we as the, we did make a couple of modifications as the finance subcommittee. One is, we did increase the revenues for the Career Tech Center. Just going to go through with everybody so they can hear. In 2016, the revenue for the Career Tech Center was increased 57%. The following year, 44%. 15%. And this last year, it has been 30% increase. We are putting in a 9% increase. We think it's going to be fairly flat, but I believe that the, there's not as many seniors graduating from Career Tech, so there will be more staying within the program. And with the new adds to the program, we're hoping to increase that. And that was an add that the finance committee felt was, we should be able to, we should be able to hit that number of increased revenue. We also did, as the finance subcommittee, cut out some of the legal costs. We think that hopefully we, up here at this table, can try to keep legal costs down because it's not going to student education. We did increase some of the severance, or we reduced, we increased some of the severance so that we can ask for some early retirement people at the end of the year, but it would be effective July 1st, not in this fiscal year. And, and then, actually, what I already mentioned is the reduction of a couple of special ed jobs or positions that were added last year. So with that, it comes out to a 4% increase by the city, and that is really the need that we have. Because as you could hear, many, many of these cost drivers, we really don't have any choice. They're either mandated or they're physical plant, and we have to take care of them. So, do we have any questions?
We would need a motion to approve as presented, and then we can discuss.
Okay.
So a motion to approve the fiscal 2019, '20 budget as presented.
So moved.
Mrs., Dr. Flowers, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Neary, any discussion or questions? I believe, we'll let the school committee do theirs, but do you, I think you have a public comment for this item, so...
Kate Dussel?
Discussion? Well, discussion on the school committee first, then we'll do the public comment.
Oh, okay.
Mrs. Bowlen.
Yeah, so, I've been heavily involved in this whole process this year, you know, and I actually really, like, lose sleep at night, like I dream about it. Because this year, I mean, every year we have challenges, but this year, the challenges are just, like, more than, you know, any district should have to do. But I just want to make sure everybody understands that this budget already has 4% built in. Right now, the city council has put in their budget, zero. That doesn't mean that's what we'll end up with, but they put in zero. So this is, if in fact they gave us nothing, there'd be another $1 million worth of cuts. If they gave us 2%, there'd be $500,000 more of cuts. So there's going to be some really tough things that have to happen. And the one thing that we can't let happen again is we just can't run a deficit, you know, and we, it puts the city in a really bad position. So, I don't know that we've made all the cuts that I feel comfortable with at this point. And I know this is a, this budget's, it's, you know, like a work in progress, because we don't know what they're going to give us, we have to go back and adjust it. But I just feel like more, like more needs to be done. We're in a bad position. I know you all know that our, that we have less support right now. I know our finance guy is coming back, right? But on a part-time basis. So, we're at a disadvantage there. So, I, even though I worked on it really hard, I will not be supporting it tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary.
I also will not be supporting this. I just have a hard time every year asking for 4% to begin with, the taxpayers, as Mr. Boatright said, with the water and... as, um, as Boatright said, with the water and sewer. I always bring this example up, it's important, that an average family in Newport is now paying two and three thousand dollars a year for water and sewer. You go to Portsmouth, and I always have these group guys, I know I've said this numerous times before, that come in to the club, and they, one of them's from Portsmouth, and he pays five dollars a month for water. Yeah, I know he has a septic system, but it's a tremendous burden on families and people like that. But, that being said, I think it was important thing that Newport this week, in the last paper, James Marolla, what a great editorial, and it's called, "We Round Another Quarter Turn," and he looks back over the last ninety days. And he said, "The Newport School Deficit is one million." And he says, "No, wait, it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars." He says, "No, hold it, hold it, hold it, just another, now it's four hundred thousand dollars. Hold on again, now it's two seventy-five thousand on the line. No, hold on again, now maybe it's eighty, seventy-eight thousand dollars, and that number's going up." So, that being said, I have no faith in these numbers. I have, there's no reliability in this operating budget, so I cannot support this.
May I speak?
I did not.
Can I go?
Mrs. Neary?
Okay, um, hmm, it's a really hard budget. It's really hard. We're given a finite amount of money, and we're supposed to fit squares into, um, holes, and it's, it's a remarkably difficult budget. We're making cuts, we're not making cuts because you, we just, we have to find money somewhere, and the only way we on the school committee can find money is by reducing deficits, which we are, which is why it goes from one million to five hundred, four hundred thousand to the number where we are now. We're trying to find ways to reduce our costs without, without taking away teachers. So I appreciate the writer, but we're actually reducing the deficit. That's what we're trying to do, to get, because we are mandated to be, um, at the end of the fiscal year, to be at zero. There's not much we could do about that part. We also do pay, uh, water and sewer, the school, so it's gone up for individuals, as we all know, living here, it's also gone up for the school. But the big thing I wanted to say is the nineteen budget, the FY nineteen budget, um, the things we have to, well, the many things we have to pay, but salary, benefits, and transportation, those are our big three cost drivers. Those amounted to thirty-seven million dollars, just FY, if you can, if you add them up. So that's salary, benefits, transportation, that. The city and state give us thirty-eight million, two oh two. That leaves about six hundred thousand dollars, and we have not talked about anything else, right? I just want people to really understand. FY nineteen, salaries, benefit, transportation are three biggest cost drivers, because transportation is, is thirty-seven million, five eighty-one, eight seventy-three. State and city combined, what we get is thirty-eight million, two oh two, seven eighty-eight. That leaves us, leaves us with six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We've not talked about any education yet. Right? I mean, so we have the teachers, but they don't have any materials, like, not a one. They don't have materials, we don't have equipment, we don't have anything. We have six hundred thou, so we're trying to find revenue, certainly, um, but that's kind of the situation we're in. I think people also have to understand, that's the situation many municipalities find themselves in, is like the state isn't funding enough, and the cities aren't, so the state doesn't fund enough, the cities don't have enough money to fund, and so we find these, ourselves with these really, really narrow margins. And so it isn't pleasant. I mean, I don't think there's any one of us who's sitting there going, "Yeah, okay, let's, um, let's cut teachers," because that's really what we need in Newport, is to cut teachers. We're not saying that, we're just looking at cold, hard numbers and going, "What do we do? And how do we raise revenue?" And a lot of you have heard me say that, if you have solutions to raise revenue, please bring them forward, and also bring them forward to us, and bring them forward to the City Council, because we are not a revenue-raising body. No school committee anywhere in the United States can raise revenue, they just don't. They're, they're dependent on either federal money, or state money, or city money. So, this is not, and it pains me to say it, but I will vote for this budget. The reason I will vote for this budget is because I want to present this budget to the City Council and go, "This is what we're, this is what we're being asked to do, to look at our children, to look at the education, to have a finite amount of money, and try to educate them." And, and because that's what we're asked to do, we actually have to cut teachers. We need to be funded. There's only, there's only so much we can cut. So, I will vote for this, because we need to present something to the city. I don't like the cuts. I, I don't know what, I, I don't know what to tell you, but this is, but the numbers are really, they're, they're hard, they're hard to look at, and, I don't know, Mrs. Boatright might have something more eloquent to say, but I don't. And I, like Mrs. Bowlen, I, I do literally lose sleep over it.
Mrs. Boatright?
So I just wanna talk to what, um, Mr. Leary had to say. I joined the committee four months ago, this is our anniversary, right here. And, um, when I became chair of the finance subcommittee, one of the, we were a million dollars over and a million dollars under, and I didn't, I don't think that's the way you do budgeting, okay? My background, I do have a lot of finance background, and we talked very long and hard, superintendent and I and another, and the finance director, saying we have to, they'd started the encumbering process, but we needed to really be cautiously, um, you can't be optimistic and you can't be too cautious, you have to be realistic, is what I said on how we budget things. So we said everything has to be budgeted now, because once you do that, you know whether you're over or under. And if you just sort of stay in sort of this loose hundred, you know, million dollars over, million dollar under, you're, you're nowhere. So we, with that, they had many meetings for the entire, all the departments coming together to try to really look at, um, how they could cut things, because once you started doing that, oh, we really started looking like we were over budget. But there are specific areas where people didn't want to, um, encumber, and I still said you have to reserve all of that. So we did build in some, um, some buffers into that, which, um, did the speaker just go? Anyway, the, um, and I'll give you the example, in, in the facilities area, you really don't know how much heat you're gonna spend and how much water you're gonna use, you know? And I said, "Well, we have to just put the entire budget in there," because nobody knows if it's gonna be a snowy year, if it's gonna be a freezing year, you have to put all that money in, you don't know until the end. These are some of the ways, that's an example, but where you can get some money later on, but you can't anticipate it. So there are ways to save money, and the, every department has been working very hard. I think many teachers are here in the room, and they know supplies are very hard to get. It's, it's been an extremely tight budget, and everybody has been working very hard to try to make the saves. There have been, you know, again, I spoke already, some students who have entered our school system, which are City of Newport students, who have required extra services. And we are obligated and mandated to supply some of those. Those are things that you cannot necessarily predict what's going to happen. But these, this is a very hard budget, I have to say. Nobody likes to make cuts, um, but we, you know, we have to get it to a point where it is, we're still doing the general education in a ver, in a quality way, and that we are doing the supports required by law. And I think that this budget can work, but we will, we need the four percent, um, from the city. And I, um, am disappointed that some of my co-members are not going to vote for this budget, but everybody has a chance to vote their, their way. So I hope that, um, we do get support of this budget, and, um, there are things that aren't done here, I have to tell you, in this direct budget, which will be presented on Thursday at the workshop, which are, um, CIP and facilities-oriented things. We're gonna ask for three hundred thousand dollars in repairs, because we have to keep care of our buildings. We are going to be asking for, um, administrative move and pre-K move dollars, which the Jade architectural firm has come up with. And we are, also have to, um, fund the Jade project, which the, which did get expanded a little bit from the original budget, because it was just started on Rogers, and then we had to do the whole pre-K and administrative move. So all those things are going into the budget. And so I am a taxpayer here, nobody likes to pay more taxes, but we need to get to a point where we deliver quality education to our students at a reasonable price. So, thank you.
Mrs. Neary?
There are a lot of teachers in this room, and I cannot imagine that a single one of you this year hasn't been short supplies. You've been short supplies, you've been short things, and that's kind of the nickel and diming, and trying to find ways to find, like, to find way to save, and is it pleasant? No, it's pleasant for no one. But it, it, it's, so you know the pain. I mean, you know the day-to-day pain, you're like, you're trying to teach, and you're missing supplies, and then you ask for the supplies, and we're like, "Yeah, no, but Olaf, can you not do that?" And it sounds so arbitrary, and I get that, it sounds arbitrary, but just go back to those numbers, and that's, that's why, that's why, and that, that is why we, we need the four percent. I mean, we need more than four percent, but then we have to talk to the state about that. So it is also a trickle-down, because I think we wanna be fair, at least I do, but I think we all want to be fair and understand that the City of Newport itself is also finding, has to itself find money somewhere. It's not like the City of Newport can print money, only the federal government gets to do that. So the city has to find money, and, and I've said that in a Finance Advisory Committee meeting, it's like, it's one bucket. It's ultimately, it's one bucket of money. It's the money for Newport, and if the city has money, the schools have money. So I go back to what I said earlier, any suggestions to increase revenue, please pass them on, because if the city has money, we have money. If the city doesn't have money, they have to make choices. And, I mean, we'd like to be on the right side of those choices, but they have to make choices as well. So that's the end of my speech, but you've all felt the pain.
Mrs. Bowlen?
I, I just wanted to make it clear, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of asking for the four percent. Bobby and I differ there. I believe that we need, you know, every cent we can get from the, from the city, but I just don't feel like this budget maybe goes far enough to make sure that next year, everything is covered. So if, but by the time we get to the final budget, I'm hoping that I have co, total confidence at that point. And I support the, the cuts that we have made in this budget, I support that.
But I'm just gonna, to, this is a vote for the, asking for the four percent, because what's in this, I can just say that, um, what's been put forth in this budget are how to, um, are how to make all those cuts, right? But it, we're not voting on necessarily all those cuts down the road. It's, it's the number that we're voting on today, that's really what we're voting on, because there's always gonna be changes between now and the end of the, by the time this thing gets implemented. That's all I wanna make that very clear, thank you.
Do we, would we want to maybe make a motion to see who supports the four percent? I mean, I, I support asking for four percent, you know? I don't know if that would make a difference.
That's what we're really doing today, tonight.
All right.
You're voting on the budget, right? So I would, maybe after this-
You're voting on a proposed budget.
Proposed budget with a bottom line that requires a four percent increase. And I just wanna make one other comment, that I made the comment earlier about NAC Tech, and we've been getting larger increases from NAC Tech, we're getting a smaller increase from NAC Tech this year than we've gotten before. We're getting a smaller increase by the State of Rhode Island, because they put us on a funding formula, and we got higher increases, and now it's dwindling down. So, and the cell tower, we, because of all the negotiation, all the things that have gone on for the last three years and so on, our revenues are down from that. So the revenues are down in other areas. It's not like we have as much money, income money, so these are the facts, we're not making this up. Thank you.
Dr. Flowers?
I just did some quick math in my head, and I said, "Oh, good Lord, it's been over fifty years I've been part of or interested in, or now part of again, in the Newport Public Schools." Preaching to the choir out there, I got, I think we all got a number of emails today, really, I must say, well-written, well-presented, from our teachers. As far as I'm concerned, you know, you're preaching to the choir here, too. It's been too many years that we've, and I've said this, I think, in one of the, um, finance meetings, we're not gonna go in and say, "Oh, please, you know, ask." This is what we need. This is what we need to, at least for the basics, practically, just the ba, basic proposed budget. Maybe there can be some other cuts. I don't see anything right now, but then again, that's something that, it's a group project. But we all, everyone sitting here has to see that, when we're investing, and I said this a number of times today to people, when we're investing in the Newport Public Schools, we're investing in the future of our city and in our children and our students. We talked about one Newport for what, a couple of years now? And people on the City Council were part of that. So maybe now it's just time for all of us to say, you know, "Do we really mean what we're saying?" I, I believe, uh, Mrs. Boatright did, you know, reminded everyone that we're having this, uh, the workshop with the City Council Thursday. We have to be there, we have to present them with something. And one of the members just left a little while ago, probably is another obligation. So she's heard what we're saying. I don't know what else can be cut. We have great building here, Thompson's great, Rogers, they, some, great things are going on there, and it costs money. Yes, we have those, those drivers. But what we're saying tonight was said fifty years ago, for goodness sakes. You know, you remove the, the major part of an educational system, it's people. You take away the people, whether it's the adults or the kids, you don't have it. And this is something that we just have to drive home to our other political leaders, not just locally, but on the state level, too. I'll be supporting this, and I think what we're supporting is to present the case for the four percent increase. They have to give us the same amount. And it should be more than four percent, but that is, that's the way it is. And keeping in mind, too, that our administrative offices, they're the ones who are going and getting a lot of, part of your budget of grants. And they work to be as, as frugal as possible without, you know, losing what we have in the schools. I'll be very disappointed if any of my colleagues here vote against this, but, um, I think, as Mrs. Boatright said, people have a right to certainly vote the way they wish. I will be supporting, at least taking this to the council and presenting our case, which looks to us as going to be a, a well-put-together case. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I got one more brief comment, and also, I'll try not to correct people too much, but when people speak up here, sometimes you gotta get the facts straight. So you can, the City Council will not be doing that, or positive, but if you have a decrease in the population, City Council can reduce your maintenance of effort, so it's not the same every year, it doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be. But that being said, I didn't want to do this, but I'm going to have to do this now. I asked about three days ago, let us to superintendent of staffing for the last 10 years and student population. So, Mrs. Ballin, kudos here, looked up in Board docs and pulled up every year to 2013 and '14. So, we don't have it after that. I just wanted to give you some facts, just so you blow away. So, when you look at the 2013-'14 year, there was 40 teacher assistants here, 40 in Newport, five years ago. Guess how many are now? Anybody got a guess? So, then take the teachers. In the teacher column, and this is all, this is all on Board docs, so you can look this up. In the teacher column, it also says certified staff. There's also 10 administrators listed in that. So, if you take that 208 students, or teachers, I'm sorry, take away that 10, you're down to 198. You've had an increase of 25 to 26 teachers in the last five years. So, you're talking about a staff increase of over 75 people. And let me, I might be off a little bit in that numbers because she hasn't finished her report, but we're pretty close, you know? This is where you're at. You've increased your staff every year so much that you need to reduce it, you know? It's insane. When you think about that, my next mission is going to be calling Milltown, Portsmouth, West Warren, all those towns, and see what they have for paraeducators. We have almost 90 paraeducators in our system.
Mr. Leary, what report are you reading from?
I'm reading from the, Mrs. Ballin got it off and sent to everybody. It was sent to all of us on Board docs.
It says 90 paras?
No, no. I was trying to get the numbers of paras, the ones we had before. We're pretty close to it, 85, 86, something like that. It might be 90.
I don't believe that's true.
What number do you think it is?
I don't believe it's accurate.
What number do you think it is?
I don't know off the top of my head, and I wouldn't guess.
Didn't we say that a couple of weeks ago?
But I will also share with you that our special ed population has increased to 18%. We are a high-incident ELL district, and we also are servicing children that we used to send out of district and to support the teaching staff. Yes, we have hired paraeducators, much to the chagrin of some on the committee that get upset when we hire them.
So, when you get the numbers, please tell me, because I think it's close to 50. All right.
I will look it up, and I'll have it available for you in the next couple of days.
Okay. So, I think before we have any more discussion, I know that we have a lot of public comment, or some public comment, I believe, signed up, Mrs. Neary. So, we could do those at this point.
Kate Dusell, grade eight teacher at Thompson Middle School, English. I appreciated hearing all of you say how you're losing sleep over this and how passionate you are about it. I know that you're working hard and that it's not a favorable decision, but if I didn't speak up, my silence would indicate that I was supportive of all of these cuts. And I know that you want teachers who are passionate about teaching and learning, so I'm going to speak my piece. I understand that making the budget is a complicated task and that difficult decisions need to be made, but it's troubling to me that balancing the budget has fallen on the shoulders of Thompson Middle School, when there are increases that are being made in the district elsewhere. Thompson is constantly facing cuts and decisions that are detrimental to the students. For years, we had an intensive program for reading intervention. The only problem with that model was that those students traveled together all day and weren't given an opportunity to be inspired or challenged appropriately with their higher achieving peers. Finally, we have pulled the homogeneous grouping out, and students are receiving differentiated instruction and have great peer role models, but their chances of reaching that level of achievement themselves has been diminished by removing consistent and effective reading intervention, and now, if these cuts are made, they will be placed in packed classrooms. Thompson doesn't need less teachers. It needs a chance for students and teachers to operate in an environment that is conducive to challenging all of our students. If the objective is for higher scores and climate and culture to improve at Thompson, then the district needs to make a financial investment in those efforts, however difficult it is to find those funds. And on another note, just looking over the budget, I noticed that there were mentions about necessary increases due to contracts for things like busing, plowing, rubbish, grounds maintenance, and all those costs that are going up. Yet, when it was time to discuss teacher salaries, the budget indicated the lowest possible increase with only step increases being offered but no pay raises. Why aren't the teachers, who are at the foundation of teaching and learning at the schools, being given the same professional courtesy as the bus company, rubbish removal, snow plowing, and other maintenance? Why aren't those services being given the lowest possible increase or being asked to perform the same work for no extra money? I'd like to note that we agreed to freeze our contract and not take a pay raise in order to help with the last budget crisis. The teachers did this in good faith, believing that we would be able to negotiate a fair pay raise for the upcoming contract, but it seems that we're already be given a zero before we even get going with those conversations. And I know that that seems like a conundrum based with the other budget issues that are there, but I just felt that it needed to be said, because the teachers deserve at least the respect of a conversation. I believe that the paramount job of a school committee is to ensure the best educational opportunities for the students in its district. If the funds aren't, I know the funds aren't there, and I am glad that the committee is working tirelessly to find the funding so that we don't make cuts that are detrimental to the learning and social, emotional well-being of the students. I'm hoping that the budget is not voted on, as is tonight. Thank you.
Sharon McDonald.
So, my name is Sharon McDonald, and I'm a resident of Newport and also a sixth-grade math teacher in Thompson Middle School for the past 14 years. I had something all written to say. I'm going to scrap most of it, based on conversation I've heard tonight. I absolutely am here out of heart, just like Kate said. I can't sit and stand and watch this go by without speaking my piece in my mind. As I heard the high school, and I'm sorry if I forget his name, but he's talking about the freshman academy. You're talking about, from what I understand, kind of decimating clusters and teaming, and I don't know if people really understand the importance of that and what it is to allow us that opportunity to have the same 80 or 90 kids in front of us. These kids are emotionally erect, many of them. They're going through hormone changes. They're in a middle school. They don't love being there, honestly, many times, it's true. But we've kind of wrapped our arms around them, and we find a way to support them. During this IIT time, which has been gone from four times in a five-day schedule to three times in a five-day schedule to twice in a six-day schedule, we sit and we talk about response to intervention. We talk about Newport Connects programs. We talk about social workers and all these other things, and DCYF programs, and there's so many things we talk about, their needs. And I'm really afraid of what is going to happen to these students if we decimate this program. So, I understand where it's coming from. When you're talking about the high school program and that freshman academy, it sounds like you're decimating the Thompson cluster program and moving to the same thing in the freshman academy. And they talked about, some of the notes I took were, "We want to do this for collaboration." That's what we're trying to do. And I feel like we're really changing, and as Kate said, I feel like we're balancing the budget on the backs of some of the Thompson kids. So, a couple of questions I have, and I really don't know the answers, but when you talk about changing the clusters, I don't know what your plan is. I don't know what, or what you know about best practice of a middle school versus a high school junior model, junior high model. What happens to class sizes? If we're having the trouble of meeting students' needs now, what happens next year? We have a super, super English language population. It's exploded. And right now, I don't feel we're meeting their needs at all. I don't. So, parents have been vocal about the needs of their students. I want to be vocal about the needs of all of our students. And so, my question is, what will next year look like? As you look at the budget, please understand, I too am a taxpayer in Newport. I understand the crisis and the financial challenges we face, but I ask you, when you're voting on this budget, and now I'm personally a little confused, are we voting on a 4% increase? Or are we voting on the specific cuts? And that's not my job, I don't know. But do you have a clear picture of how these changes you're proposing, like, at least specifically Thompson Middle School, how will it affect the students of Newport? Thank you for your time and consideration.
My thanks to all of you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I have some comments, and then I have some requests. I looked, I was at the budget workshop last week when we discussed possible cuts or anything else. I looked at that preliminary budget, and in there, there were, you were adding a resource or a special ed teacher to Thompson. I'm not sure if it's been pulled out, but we were told last Thursday at our Thompson faculty meeting that we had requested a .5 art teacher and a resource or special education teacher to be added, and they were denied. That's what I'm hearing. That's what, that's what was presented at last Thursday's staff meeting. Just want to get that out there, because that went before the entire staff. All right? And I'm hoping that's not the case, because we've tried to move our classrooms towards a more heterogeneous structure, but many, many of our classes, and I've spoken personally to Superintendent Germaine while one of my classes was coming in, and nearly 50% of some of the classrooms at Thompson have children with IEPs. That's a fact. So, we're telling the public we're heterogeneous, but in many instances, those classes are packed with children of needs. So, we're going to need more help in the ELL department and the special ed department, definitely. The district has changed. If we pick up the Providence Journal, the state has changed. If we look at the articles that have been run, and I was talking to Mr. Gomes about it, what other districts are doing to help their ELL population, maybe we should start looking at what these other places are doing, including the town next door to where I live in Narragansett. South Kingston is doing some very innovative things to help the ELL population. And I suggest we talk to Kristen Stringfellow, the superintendent there. The other thing I wanted to comment on was, it seems like with the scheduling committee that we currently have in place at Thompson, we may have to put the brakes on that for a little while, because until we finalize this budget, there's no sense in us continuing to move in a direction, a utopian direction, to get a good schedule together, because it's not going to be possible if we don't know what we have to work with. It'll be extremely difficult to do that, and it may, in fact, be futile. Next one, a couple of requests. Mr. Leary, if in fact you don't believe the numbers that are in front of you, I highly recommend that you request a forensic audit again, and get your votes here, and get them on the city council. If in fact that's the way you truly feel, grab your votes. Next comment I wanted to make about us salaries and benefits taking up a lot of the budget. That's true. It's also true with your public works department, your police and your fire departments as well. Okay? I don't know if the chief stands up and screams that, "Well, a lot of the money's going to the cops. We've got to figure out a way to cut that, because we can't buy squad cars." I don't know. Those administrators, their salaries, they're doing a lot. They're facilitating, they're supervising, they're doing yeoman's work. They're finding grants. The teachers are preparing lessons, trying to provide an education to these children. We're not making cars here. We're a human-driven organization. That's the way it is. So, every time you say it's about salary and benefits, it hurts. So, I'm respectfully requesting that we don't hear that as much anymore. My last question, or my last request, is for you Superintendent Germaine to come to the schools and speak to us, all three schools, heart to heart. It'll go a long way. Assistant superintendent and many of these principals have been out in front. I watched the other night how heartbroken our principal and vice-principal were when they proposed to us what was coming down with this budget. They wore it on their sleeve. I'd love to see you come in and talk to the staff in a human way. Thank you.
Is that for public comment? Any other discussion? I think Mr. Leary, Mrs. Ballin.
All right. So, I would hate for my vote, no vote, to influence the city council not to give the 4%. And I'm hearing, you know, my colleagues, I never come to a meeting with my mind completely made, you know, like, I can always listen to what's going on here. If in fact that's going to be helpful for us to get the 4%, I will change it, but I need to know that we can go back and adjust this budget, you know, that that's going to happen, that this is not, you know, we're not done at this point with the budget. And if you can assure me that that's going to happen, I will vote so the city council sees that, you know, we're sticking together. Moving things around, and yes, and if we need to make cuts, they'll be made. Okay? All right.
Mr. Leary, did you, Mrs. Neary?
Can I please ask that you all show up on Thursday at the budget workshop? I'm serious. Like, we're hearing you. So, we run on education. That's literally the only thing we run on, right? School committee is a very different thing than city council. That is quite literally the only thing that we run on, is educating the children of Newport. That is our entire complete, that's all we run on. The city council runs on a whole bunch of things with a whole bunch of other priorities. Please come on Thursday, when we, who run on education, are trying to tell them, "Make us a priority. You have to make us a priority." But if it's only six of us, I'm willing to bet, we're going to get wagging of the finger, "You're not, you're not cutting enough, you're not doing this, you're not doing that." We need your voices. We need your voices. So, that's what I'm going to say, and thank you for coming tonight. Please, please, please come on Thursday. If you cannot come on Thursday, send letters, write letters to the editors, send letters to the city council. They have to know that it matters. They have to know that our children matter and that we are not making cars. We aren't making cars. We're not making widgets. We're talking about people. As Dr. Flowers said, we're talking about the future of the city of Newport, and that has to be a priority. That has to be a priority. You don't have to agree with how we're trying to budget it, and that's fine, but we live in the reality where we have a finite number, and we have to make things fit within that finite number. And we need that number to be 4% higher next year, so that we can continue to do, to find different ways of essentially saving money without touching the people-driven business, because it is people-driven. It's education. I mean, it's education. You need teachers. That's like, right. I mean, otherwise, we have buildings. If you don't have the teachers and you don't have the students, what, we have our buildings? Right? So, we, sometimes I feel that people think we don't get that, but that is literally the only thing we run on. When you run on for school committee, when, I mean, and I said that at different forums, I did not run for the taxpayers. I ran for the children. My constituents are the children of Newport, all of them. Even the ones who show up three days ago because their parents have moved here and all of a sudden they're in your classroom, that's my kid. That's who I ran for. But my number doesn't change when that kid comes in. So, please, 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 I don't know how many ways to say it, come to the city council at 6:30 on Thursday. to the City Council at 6:30 on Thursday. I'm not promising solution. I don't think any of us are promising solutions, but they have, there has to be a show of strength. It's like, wait, no, wait, there's a whole bunch of us here, and we think that this is a priority, that educating the children of Newport is a priority. And so, maybe other things in the city, maybe we can cut other places in the city because we're focusing on the priority. Because as we all know, Barrington puts all of its money in its schools. That's what they've decided as a city. They have, granted, they have different demographics, they have different this, they have different that, but as a City Council, as a body, they've decided that's our thing. Education, that's our thing. We're going to put money in there. So, please come. Thank you for coming, and please come again, or write, or email, or, I know people are busy, so please. That's the end of my comments, I think.
Ms. Boatright.
Okay. I thank you, Ida, for saying that very much, and I think, please come, please write to them as well, please contact them because it is very important that they see as many parents and in the room that they do when they have a mooring meeting. Thank you.
So, before you do anything, Mr. Kay, I will come visit, talk to everyone, but it's come at 6 o'clock. It starts at 6:00. Just an FYI. We can do a robo-call and put it out there. Thank you, Melissa, for the suggestion. Thank you. 6 o'clock.
Dr. Flowers.
I can't really improve on what other people have said here, but especially you folks who are taxpayers yourself, because there's always too much with, you know, us against the taxpayers. Everyone sitting here is a taxpayer, and many of you folks are there are too. Also, we're here all year. We're not the tourists. We're not the ones, we're not the weekenders either who don't have that same investment. Monetarily, they do, but they do not have that investment of educating their youngsters. So, I think this is something that we together, not just you, not just those of us sitting here, but all of us together have to drive home their point that just as we are voted in to represent you, so are the council members, I'm saying this with all due respect, yes, it is due to them, that they are representing all of us, and that's an important point to drive home also.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Leary. I'll only let you talk if you pull that microphone closer.
Yeah, thank you. If Ms. Boatright, I think the audience might be a little confused, even with the 4% asking for the city, still, that's, all these cuts are there. So, could you explain that, Ms. Boatright? So, in other words, if you've got 4%, there's no cuts. Is that what you're saying, Ms. Boatright, or no?
No. With all those cuts, you still need a 4%.
Okay. But those, those cuts are there with the 4%.
And for reference, last year, we got 1.5%.
But it's still, it's still great that you come and...
Gretchen, could I just ask that you come to the microphone? You can speak as much as you'd like. Thank you.
No, I just...
And identify yourself. We know who you are.
So, I'm Gretchen Bobb. I'm the new teacher over at the Rogers Vocational School. I'm a graduate of Rogers High School, and, you know, I was a real estate agent in New York City, and I would not do real estate in Newport, Rhode Island, because what's happening right now is they're driving people who are my age, which is 37 years old, out of Newport to move to Portsmouth because you can't afford to, because people are not, there's not enough money going into the school system to end up having to educate people who are intellectuals, who have actually worked really hard to get where they are, but they're moving elsewhere because they can't afford to go to send their kids to private school, plus the home. So, just as an overall macro perspective, just thinking about it that way, that's a really good way to present it to the city, considering the fact that they want to keep a year-round population, which is what is important. So, they're going to drive everybody out, and then just have weekenders and no school system. So, that's it. That's all I have to say.
So, thank you. So, it is important to stress this evening, I think the support should be for the, we have a budget number here on this proposed budget of $42 million, $19,554. It's a $42 million. That's the most that we can get through all our revenue sources for next year. So, our budget is going to be, I'm voting tonight to say that that's going to be our budget number for next year. Am I voting to say that you see the final budget in front of you of cuts? I don't think so, and I think we'll be back, A, again, to approve a final budget when all the dust is settled. I don't unfortunately expect to be sitting before you and have that number. I'm hoping I'm surprised, and I can say I was fooled, and we have $42 million to spend next year on education in the city of Newport. I don't think we're going to see it. There's a huge burden on our taxpayers throughout the state, and I've said it repeatedly. The only way we're going to sustain good quality public education is through regionalizing and joint efforts between communities. Our district, our school, we have 39, 36, I think it is, school districts in Rhode Island, all dependent on local tax dollars, local property taxes to fund our school system. I believe if, the last time I looked, we were 43rd in the country for per capita spending on education, Rhode Island. So, until we get serious as a state, my approval tonight will be for the $42 million. That's the most that we can spend by all of the sources we can get. That's what I'm voting for. I think the cuts, there'll be other cuts. There may be movement in this budget before it's finally approved, when the dust settles. I think sadly, I'm happy to see the teachers here. I support the teachers coming. I hope you all do take the advice and come Thursday night. There's probably some parents among you, fortunately or unfortunately, I've been at too many City Council meetings in the past three months that I've seen 50 people come and protest, fighting the city over the size of a dinghy, whether it's a 12-foot boat or a 14-foot boat, in the dinghy size, and 50 people passionate. We're going to have a $42 million budget that we're going to propose to the City Council on Thursday night, and I guarantee you, there won't be 50 people in the whole place. That's sad to me, that a talk about a dinghy dock gets more people to come to a City Council meeting than 42, spending $42 million on education in the city of Newport. So, I think, again, we've heard plenty of people say, "Come, come, come in numbers." But again, we need parent support, I ask all the time. Parents call me up and you say, "Oh, you're doing this, and you're cutting that," and you... I say, "Well, I'll see you Thursday night at the school, at the City Council meeting. Come to the Budget Workshops." So, I encourage everybody to come. That's it. The basic premise is $42 million is, $42 million, $19,554. If everything aligns perfectly, that's what we can spend on education next year in the city of Newport. I doubt that'll be the case sadly, but it's a reality. So, I encourage everybody to come. I encourage everybody to remain active in the process. We do listen, although it may not appear that we listen at times, but we do. And so, that's my say on why I will be saying yes to this budget tonight, but it's supporting a number, not the final, not the final budget and where all the pieces fall. So, seeing any, no other discussion? All those in favor?
Just got a question.
Come to the microphone and say what you'd like.
Question, suggestion?
Just identify yourself.
Tina Brownell, I am a taxpayer and a teacher at Thompson Middle School. Is there any way we can do a public service announcement to get people at this? The reason there were 50 people at the mooring meeting is because they were talking about it amongst the people who care about moorings for months and months and months and months and months. So, is there any way we can put a public service announcement out there on Facebook? I know that's a taboo, but, you know, lots of, with the facts.
What will my headline be tomorrow, Sean? Will the Daily News put out, "Come to the, please, come to the City Council meeting"?
Front page?
So, we will. We'll do a robo-call.
And tell people why they need to be there and what their purpose for being there is and what would happen if they, if it doesn't get, you know, with some good facts and information.
So, and that's well put, and we'll make sure that we get every means, whether it's robo-calls, information out. Just so you know, this is a, this is just a workshop of us presenting the budget to them. They'll have several other meetings that people will need to attend when they're setting. They won't set anything on Thursday night as far as their percent. Like they said, their proposed budget right now is a 0% increase for schools next year from the city appropriation.
Can we tell people that and let them know?
Oh, we will. No, we'll get it out. We'll do what we can, but again, this is just the beginning of a three-month process, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody's welcome. Nope, I'll let you all come up and talk if you want. No?
I'm Anna Kimes. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a parent of two children at Pell, and I'm a teacher at Rogers High School. I don't know what the answer is. I just would like to propose this. I'm just thinking, I'm wondering why and how it came about that Thompson has to be decimated. I'm certainly not going on the record saying, "Let's cut at Pell, let's cut at Rogers, let's cut here." I'm just trying to understand if we're in such dire straits, why does it all have to come out of Thompson? And I would like to look very closely at if we, I mean, we're in a, like, I'm finally understanding that the 4% still includes the cuts to Thompson. So, I'm trying to understand, have we done the best, best, best we can to look at every single, like, look at closely at all our students and what they need and prioritize and do the best we can and why it's totally falling on Thompson? I don't understand that, and I know a lot of parents have asked me that. Why Thompson? So, that's my question. Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Boatright.
I just want to make a comment to that, and, you know, anything can change. This is a number we're trying to get because it is very hard. Cuts, I think what has to be understood is cuts have to be made, okay? Last year, I do want to say, I was not on the committee at the time, but I, my understanding is there was a world language at Rogers cut, there was a biology cut, there were, there was a custodian cut at Rogers, there was, was it two reading teachers at Rogers cut?
One.
One, so several cuts were made to Rogers last year. I just don't want you to think they went, people, places have been unscathed. When Pell was created, actually, they had to increase class size for, to get the state aid also at Pell. So, there's, it's not like we're, there's nobody aiming our lens at any one place. I just think that's important to know, and we have to work together to try to figure this out.
Great. Seeing, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Worth. I'm a Newport resident. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Caitlin Worth. I'm a Newport resident, and I'm a fifth-grade science teacher at Thompson Middle School. I'm just looking for some clarification because I've been hearing a lot of different things, and I would love to hear from the school committee. It was told to Thompson teachers that this budget, after being proposed to the City Council, if the 4% passes, still includes a cut for $469,000 in teacher salaries, and that was equated to six or seven teachers out of Thompson Middle School. I'm not sure that those numbers have been spoken tonight or that that reality has been actually put out there, but in my opinion, that's a lot of teachers. Are those the numbers that we're looking at in this budget?
Pretty close. Yes, yeah.
So, we're looking at that number? That's the number. Like, that's the cold, hard number. That number doesn't necess, it's, right now, in the cold light, very cold light, we're looking, where do we get that number? There are other places to, we're working on finding other places, but that's the number, right? That is the number. We are going to need to find 600,000, like, $400,000. Where do we find it? We're hoping it's not in teachers, but we do have to find it, one way or the other. So, the number is real. The finality of the teacher cut, that isn't real, but the number is really real.
And that is if the 4% is approved on Thursday.
And last year, it was 1.5%.
I will just say that every 1% is typically three to four, teacher, staff positions, whatever. So, it's not, it's not an easy thing. It's not easy to sit up here, I will tell you that. It really is not. But what the, as you've seen at Thompson this year, okay, there's not enough art teachers and there's not enough other teachers, and it's also because there's more classes with smaller class size in that cluster model that causes additional teaching resources. That's why that, that's the reason why, that otherwise we have to add more people to accommodate that model. And so, it's, we're looking at what we'd call a modified model, trying to keep still some cluster, the students together in a, but again, I don't, you know, that's really up to how it's implemented at the school level, so that's why.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worth. Mr. Chair, may I just, very quickly?
Sure, why not?
Thanks.
You can go for another 35?
35 minutes, I got 35 minutes, I know. For those of you that are still in the audience, and to please bring this back to your colleagues, this is the first in a very long process. And usually when we have the workshop with the council, we usually explain the dollars. We don't really already identify the where. But we're going through a new process in budgeting where we look at those numbers and we say, "Where can that amount come from?" And when we look at, to the last question, we look at this, we look at the contract, we look at the staffing, we look at the numbers. To Mrs. Boatright's point, last year, Rogers did have some reduction in staff, and Thompson did too. And we also had some redirecting as far as how we structured the Special Ed Department as far as putting in coordinators at two locations. All of the final what we're going to do, as the chair just shared, will not be determined and finalized until we know the final number. And what we'll also continue to do, which we are continuing now, is we're looking for alternative revenue sources in grants, whatever we can do, and we're continuing to do that. My goal and hope is we could find something very similar to what we got for the high school through the Bar Foundation and Van Buren, provided extra funds for professional development, training, coaches, and to help support staff. If we can find things like that, we will continue to work on those things, but we will continue to work for alternative revenues as we go through this process. Most likely, it will be a full month, at least, until we know our final number. But I just want to let you know, this is just the beginning, and the most important time and day to be there is the night they take the vote on our budget. So, we'll keep you informed and the parents on that. Tina, to your question about notification, I've already sent a message out to our two community, Rebecca and Marson, to get robo-calls and do a blitz in the next two days. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief comment.
Sure.
During my inaugural speech, I made a comment as to the reality of Newport. Newport's changed. Those of you who haven't been here, haven't grown up here, knew the town, it's totally different. And I've said this numerous times, you know, this is a big military town, 50,000 sales in it. And in '72, when they left, when Nixon won the election, they took the Navy out of Newport, it went down, and it's gone down ever since. Right now, and I won't comment further with the story, 62% of the houses in Newport are what they call dock houses or rentals. A dock house is somebody comes in for five or six months, shuts the lights off, puts the alarm on, goes. It's changed now. The middle class has disappeared out of Newport. It's going faster than you think. It's going to change more and more.
Great. Seeing no other discussion or conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is 6.6, request for approval of Bike Newport use of Rogers High School for the Elliot's Ride on May 19th. There's an action item before you. Is there a record, approve, a recommendation for approval, motion for approval?
So moved.
Ms. Boatright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that Bike Newport and have been the most... Yeah, I just want to say that Bike Newport and have been the most incredible partners over the last number of years. They have added a whole nother depth to the city, the things they do for our young kids, the training they help with our teachers on, this is a great way to, you know, recognize their contributions, and, and I will absolutely be supporting this.
Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
And I want to thank Barry Freeman, she is here, for coming and all the support she is giving our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 6.7, establish a short-term subcommittee to review Newport School Department operational procedures for finance, data, and others. Ms. Boe Wright will explain this to you all.
Yeah, I, this is a, I was on a finance committee for the city, and this is a really, what I would call an operational committee to come in and look at finance operations and reporting, look at PO, how you create POs, look at really the operations, how we get information, how, financial as well as just data, and then look at what other school systems do to see how their systems work, how their processes work, and come back and make recommendations. So it's a limited time, four to six weeks, four to six months, sorry, a community-driven. When we did it with the finance subcommittee, it was all community members, so I think it should be all community. I would be an advisor, but not a member of the committee, and we would get, give access, we would work with the administration and, to make sure that this committee would have access to people throughout our school district. And that's it.
Sir, the, items before you, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion was made by Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Dr. Flowers, any discussion? Dr. Flowers, oh, do you have discussion? Sorry, somebody had their hand up. Mr. Leary?
No.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion items. Number 7.1 is improving impact aid responses, requested by Mr. Leary.
Yes, Mr. Jermaine, could you give us the final numbers on the forms collected from each school, Rogers, Thompson, and Pell?
Yes, they're in the backup, let me just read them to you. For 2019, we had an 86% rate return, the high school 77%, middle school 89%, and Pell 99%.
So what's the process to stop, we had to push hard for this to get this done, is there going to be somebody next year that's going to be responsible, and I think people say this every year, and we never collect them all, is there somebody going to be responsible next year? Where's this going to go?
We actually did collect more forms than we have in the past.
I know that.
Oh, yes, so, um, what?
I'd love to go out and collect them.
Yeah, okay, so we did collect more forms, and we are, at all three schools, we're setting up a process for collecting all forms, lunch forms, impact aid forms, and within the schools, the responsibility of students and parents, and that's already in, I'll call it a development stage with the principals on the process and how they're going to handle it. As a matter of fact, something just recently went out from my office that lunch forms would have to be in by September 21st for next year, and so there, there already be, the leaders in the buildings are already be, being given timelines, specific metrics to follow for when they have to hand in things.
So I would like to, go ahead, Dr. Flowers.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, I'm looking at the, the deadline that these forms had to come in, this might sound silly, but I'll put it forth. Sometimes if you give people too long a deadline, things get lost.
Yep.
So, you know, if you say, because I used to kind of like bribe the kids with some fun activity, "Get it, your homework tonight is to get this paper in," sometimes it doesn't work that way, but it could be appropriate for the grade levels, but if you say, you know, you have, I don't know, even a couple of weeks to get it in, I was just surprised how late, how well into the year that these forms were going to be submitted to whoever gets them. It seems like it's a long time.
The impact aid has specific rules and guidelines, so we have to offer so many days, and I believe it's about a month, we try to coordinate it.
So you have to do that?
We coordinate, yes, we do, Mr. Leary, we have to coordinate it, and we have to give them the timelines.
More than a month, though.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant, we didn't have to give them a month.
No, no, more than a month.
Yeah, and what we actually do is we, we work, we try to work with Middletown, Portsmouth, all Aquinic Island schools, so that when the forms go home, that if, for instance, we have children that are from Middletown and all the other districts, so we try to coordinate it with the other districts, when we're sending them out, when they come back, so it's almost like a community island-wide, everyone knows the due dates.
Yeah. It was just a thought, you know, kind of tighten up the timeline.
I agree with you, shorter time, better.
Some of you can get them in, and it's just interesting that here you have, again, the high schools, the ones, you're right, sometimes, I think sometimes parents feel, "Well, I filled that out one, do I have to fill out for each one of the kiddies?" And they do.
Yes, they do.
That's some of the problems, too.
So it's great. Dr. Jermaine, I'm going to ask that next month, we'll have this on the agenda again as a discussion item, but the point of that discussion would be to have the three schools tell us how they plan to increase their rate and why they think what they're proposing will work for next year. That'll be a good discussion item for next month. Any other discussion?
So, Mr. Gom, so I'm clear, you want all three leaders here to talk to you about their proposals, not necessarily send them to you?
I don't know if there's a particular person that's responsible for them all, the forms, who, who's, who's the number one?
As the leaders of the building, I'm sure they're going to set that up, we can get all that information to you.
But who is responsible for the collection of the forms ultimately in the district?
At the, usually it goes to the business manager, business administrator.
The business manager can report next month on how we plan to improve collection at all three schools.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be all three, I just want to know what all three schools will be doing in next year to improve the collection of the forms and why they feel what they're suggesting is going to work.
And, and we're also trying to include it on a, on a policy change, so I sent that in, and the policy, they're, they're reviewing it now, so that...
That'd be good.
Yeah. You can't play sports.
Perfect.
Unless she got it in.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to 7.2, update on collection of lunch forms. And I believe Mrs. Bowlen added some information today, I believe it got put in.
Right. So this could be easily a long, drawn-out, you know, like, it needs to be a workshop almost. I'm going to suggest that we have a workshop, because I know that we need to change the way we're doing things, and that we could do this, we need to have health and wellness there to give us their, you know, opinions too, and so I think you've got a lot of information here that I, that I put in here, and if you have any questions, you can get back to me, but I, I would like to see us have some kind of a workshop very soon to discuss this, because the outcome of the decisions you make are going to affect the district as a whole, you got to be very careful with what you do, but there are things we can get done. But I've broken it down, I spent eight hours breaking it down, I don't think it's ever been broken down like this before when you look at the numbers, and it's very helpful that now we just have four categories that we have to address with these kids and parents.
No, I think that's a great idea, and I would have two points of discussion for that. One is, I think at the workshop, we should request that somebody from Chalk Wells is available for questions at the workshop, as well as, I think we should reach out to at least Middletown and Portsmouth, if not the other school districts, to see what they are doing.
I will have that at that meeting, I'll, I'll reach out to find out.
Great, we'll have Mrs. Nash poll for availability on that tomorrow. Any other discussion? Seeing none, next item is eight, consent agenda. I would say that approval of the consent agenda in its entirety, 8.1, 8.2, 8.3 would be appropriate, is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms., Dr. Flowers, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Neary? Yes?
If we could pull 8.1 for a separate vote, 8.2, A5, and 8.2 D1.
Well, then we'll go through them one by one, Mr. Leary, that's fine. 8.1?
No, 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 just a quick few.
No, that's fine.
No, no, I don't want to go one by one, we have time for that.
Well, we're gonna, you basically, that's fine, we'll go through them. 8.1, approval of minutes.
Well, how about I do this for standards, in essence of time, I'll make my comments, and we do them all at once.
We have plenty of time, Mr. Leary, we'll go 8.1.
15 minutes.
We'll be fine. Mr. Leary? 8.1, approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Mrs. Neary. Discussion on 8.1, approval of minutes.
So, questions to Mr. Superintendent Jermaine, is this the one that the, is that, it's the executive session one, is that settled now? Is that done?
What date are you looking at?
8.1, March 6, 2019.
March 6?
Yep.
I could, I could tell you that the discussion at those meetings were the Esser DCYF cases that were pending, and I know at least one of them, an appeal, has been sent just this week to the Department of Ed. I don't know about the Esser.
So once this settle, my point, Mrs. Jermaine, is that, once the executive session is settled, we have to open up, no more sale of the miss, we have to open the miss up, so I want to make sure that's happened.
All right, I will check with Attorney Galvin, I'm not...
He gave us that, he gave us that letter, he said, when he gave us the letter, I...
No, I, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary, what I'm just speaking to, I don't know if all the matters are settled.
I believe Mr. Leary's point is in order, but I don't believe the matters from that evening have been settled.
Right, I don't believe they have either.
All right, good enough.
We'll check on those and...
That's the point.
Any other discussion on 8.1? Seeing none? Oh, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 8.2, personnel actions, is there a motion in order to approve 8.2 as presented?
So moved.
Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Mrs. Neary.
Mr. Chairman, my two comments on 8.2, A5, I want to thank Mrs. Bowlen personally, this is with the, with Scott Dixon coming back as the coach, I think she went out of her way to get this done, and I think it's very good in her part, so I just want to personally make sure that I recognize her for doing that.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Bowlen.
All for the kids.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on 8.2? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
8.3, request for home, approval of invoices and requisitions, is there a motion to approve it as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Boe Wright, motion to approve, seconded by Mrs. Neary. Any discussion on 8.3? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nine is...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I missed one, 8.2, can I make a brief comment? If not, no, no problem.
Sure, we happy to go back to 8.2.
When people retire from the system, I think it's important that, you look at what they said, and I want to read a note from Cindy Seikert, who is retiring on, because it's, well, next year, I think it's next year, it's around, she says, "I want to thank you for the privilege of teaching science to the children of Newport, it has been a valuable time in my life, and I will greatly miss my students and colleagues at Rogers High School." I just want to thank her for sending in a nice note.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting me drive, I missed that.
Sure, no, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Leary, for catching that.
Yes.
Nine, correspondence, monthly correspondence, we have one correspondence, I believe, if I can catch up with myself. Monthly correspondence, we have a very nice letter from the Martin Luther King thanking us for the program of what they call reclaiming food from the Pell School and donating to the Dr. Martin Luther King Community Center's Free to Friend Food Pantry, it's been going very well. I believe this letter states that they collected over 125 pounds of food in the month of February, so it's a great program, and it's a letter thanking the school system for that. So, motion in order to accept the correspondence.
So moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boe Wright, yes, Ms. Boe Wright?
No, I second it.
Oh, fine, I thought you had a comment. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ten is reports from superintendent and staff.
We can go through them, or we can make a motion to accept them as presented this evening?
I motion to make them presented as a whole.
Okay, accept them as presented, items 10.1 through 10.7, made by Ms. Boe Wright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Very good. Suggested meeting dates and agenda items, we have tonight's, April 11th is the much talked about Newport School Committee, Newport City Council Joint Budget Workshop at 6:30, but Dr. Jermaine believes that's at 6:00. Says 6:30 on the...
I believe it's 6:00.
It's at 6:00.
It's at 6:00, so that's a mistake in our, it says 6:30, so 6 o'clock in the council chambers. April 25th, there is a tan negotiating subcommittee, 5 o'clock here at Pell School. So those are the suggested meeting dates and agenda items, we have nothing for executive session, so a motion would be in order to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr., Dr. Flowers, motion to adjourn, seconded by Mrs. Neary?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add two things for agenda items for next month.
Okay.
One would be the four-by-four schedule at Rogers for a vote, and number two, I'd like to also ask for a forensic audit again, we're not in vote.
Okay, we'll consider those items for the agenda next month.
Thank you.
Motions have been made to adjourn by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Mrs. Neary, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening, thank you.
10 minutes to spare.
See, I told you we'd get through.